...session, the town council has given unanimous general approval of tentative agreement reached between the town council and the fire department. The town council has given direction to the administrator and the labor council to finalize terms of tentative agreement. On Wednesday, they'll be doing that. On Thursday, it will be made public. And on Monday, May 4th, before our meeting, well, part of our meeting, we will hopefully ratify it. Did I forget anything? Okay. Should we wait a little bit? Consent agenda. Approve of special town council meeting minutes, April 6, 2015. Approval of executive session minute meetings, April 6, 2015. Approval of town council minute meetings, March 23, 2015. Approval of executive session minutes, February 23, 2015. Approval of executive session minutes, special council meeting, February 16, 2015. Approval of special town council meeting, February 7, 2015. Received minutes for the following boards and commissions. Historical Preservation Advisory Board, two. Planning Board, zoning board of review, two. Library Board of Trustees, Harbor and Coastal Water Management Commission. Correspondents received and filed response from Rhode Island Department of Revenue, Division of Municipal Finance, approval of notice of proposed property tax rate change for fiscal year 2015-2016. Town of Charleston Resolution in support of H. 5594 and S. 0741, Streetlight Investment Act. Town of Charleston Resolution in opposition to surtax on second homes. Wesley Town Council Resolution in opposition of A. 5257 relating to waters and navigation harbor and harbor lines. Wesley Town Council Resolution in support of H. 5000, taxation of personal income tax. Wesley Town Council Resolution in support of H. 5107, commission to study implication of taxing time and income. Rescheduling of public hearing to June 8, an amendment to ordinance, Chapter 30, Courts, Article 2, regarding municipal court regulations. John Cundero, Megan Alcindero Memorial Foundation requests permission to hold seventh annual miles for Megan bike ride walk on Saturday, October 3, 2015, in Tiverton and Little Compton, referred to Police Chief for recommendation. Treasurer, March 31, 2015, quarterly report to Division of Municipal Finance and Auditor General. Fire Department overtime report, Town Council proclamation for Tiverton Litter Cleanup Week, Saturday 2 through Saturday, May 9. Philomena Santos Higgins Development Director, Assistant Fibrosis Foundation, request council's authorization for 62 and 25 mile cycle for life Rhode Island ride on Saturday, September 19, 2015, to start and finish on Westport River Vineyards, Police Chief Blakey recommendation. Town Council Resolution in support of Women's Lung Health, week 11 through May 11 through May 17. Correspondents to Chief Lloyd from Greenwood Emergency Vehicles regarding ambulance inspection. Would anyone like to take anything off?
Madam President.
Yes, Joe.
CA 11.
Madam President, A. 8 and A. 10, just for short discussion.
A. 8 and A. 10. Anyone else? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion been made in second, all those approved, opposed. CA 8, Town Council proclam-- oh, yeah. Well, I'm just gonna go in.
Oh, you want us, that's fine.
Town Council proclamation for Tiverton Litter Cleanup Week, September, May 2 through Saturday, May 9.
Yes, Madam President, I'd just like to read this, so we can get a little bit of publicity out there and people will know what's going on. Town Council had its regular scheduled meeting on Monday, April 27, 2015. By motion made, my audience was passed this proclamation at the request of the Tiverton Garden Club. Let's tidy up Tiverton Litter Cleanup Week, on Saturday, May 2 through Saturday, May 9, 2015. The kickoff for the Cleanup Week commences on Saturday, May 2, 2015, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the audience beach on May 9. The DPW approves, approved bags are available for volunteers at kickoff with approved bag drop-off sites. The Tiverton Garden Club and Tiverton Litter Committee gratefully acknowledge this is support of the DPW, Tiverton Town officials and staff, area businesses, and dedicated volunteers who make this community a white effort possible by the order of the Tiverton Council. Just wanted to get that out there so people know when it starts and when it ends, and I think it's been a great program that they don't every year, and it helps clean up the town. On the other one--
I just want a motion for CA 8 to approve.
Make a motion, CA 8 approving.
Second.
Motion been made in second, all those in favor, opposed. Okay, next one.
Next one, I think is extremely important. It's a proclamation, again, Women's Lung Health Week, May 11 through May 17, 2015. Whereas every fine minute a woman in the United States is told she has lung cancer. Whereas lung cancer is the number one cancer killer of women in the United States around here. Whereas the lung cancer death rate in women has almost doubled over the past 37 years. Whereas advocacy and increased awareness will result in more and better early detection and treatment for women with lung cancer and other lung diseases will ultimately save lives. And whereas lung for us is the national movement led by the American Lung Association to unite women to stand together with collective bargaining strength and determination to lead the fight against lung cancer and for lung health. Therefore, be it resolved with the Tiverton Town Council to hereby proclaim the second full week in May as Women's Lung Health Week throughout the community and encourages all residents to learn more about the dedication and treatment of lung cancer. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve CA 10?
Second.
Second, anyone second?
Second.
Motion been made in second, all those in favor. CA 11, Mr. Souza.
Well, I have nothing in my folder to go along with this correspondence. So I'd like an explanation what this was.
You don't have it?
Here's a typical cover sheet on six. I must have looked past it. Would you explain what it was, please?
Sure, come on up, sheen. First of all, I want to make it clear, Councilman, you asked us to--
Back to someone.
So we followed up with--
Thank you.
But this is not the end of the correspondence, because the chief and I have discussed it, and the response from you is unacceptable, so what the chief--
During the budget process, you wrote a detailed report on Rescue One. We worked with Greenwood to get someone to finally come down to look at it. Again, we had to work around their schedule because we weren't paying them to be here. They came down, they went through the truck with the mechanic, and that is the report that we got from them that we forwarded to you. We have both, Mr. Ojek and myself, have looked at it, and getting back to Greenwood to try to reschedule to have, have them do a much more in-depth review of that truck. And that was out of your request.
I want them to look at the box. I don't need them to speak to Paul. I speak the same language as Paul, so I already talked to him, and I already know what he thinks of the engine and the chassis. I need to know what's up with the ambulance box itself, and that's what we're asking them to look at, and they didn't answer that question in this letter, so I'm gonna ask them to do it again. I didn't want this to languish forever like we haven't followed up any of the requests, so it isn't here and ready, and you can judge it for yourself, but it's only the beginning and the end of that correspondence.
Yeah, I always say, we need to try to get as much life out of these ambulances as we can. We set a schedule for replacement, and we have to fix it, we have to fix it. So we need to make sure the Budget Committee has enough money in the repair budget, and I think this will help to get an idea where we're at. I mean, all right, I found it, thank you.
Motion to accept, CA 11.
Second.
Motion been made in second, all those in favor. Do I have--
I don't realize.
No. Public hearings and proper presentation. Tiffany Pei, and I don't know if I said your name right, Four Corners Merchants Association, Nesterville and THS scholarship.
Hi, I'm Tiffany Pei, from the Tiverton Four Corners Merchants Association. I also have a store in Tiverton. I'd like to announce and invite you to come to our third annual Nesterville on Mother's Day weekend, May 9 and 10. It's a great event where everyone wins. All the shops will have a nest of colored eggs with coupons. You donate a dollar, and you get a coupon and an egg, and all the money will go to a Tiverton scholarship this year. We're actually gonna match the funds so that it will go toward arts or business, furthering their education. Applications are at the Garden's office, I've left some here, they're at my store, Tiffany Pei Jewelry, and they're also on the Tiverton website. I'd like to encourage all of you to come and participate, and also recommend that anyone who's a senior in high school definitely apply, please. Also, I'd like to say that we've gotten together with the Experience Rhode Island Tours, and during the Volvo races, they're gonna actually have tours come from Newport through Tiverton and Little Compton, and that's a new thing this year, just for the Volvo races. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Barbara Pelletier, update on state tourism in Newport County.
Good evening, and we just heard tourism is coming, but we really should pick up on this. Now, tourism is a major focus of our governor right now. As a matter of fact, she was in Newport this morning, because she is trying to target the areas of tourism and who promotes it. So it is an important source of income for the state of Rhode Island, and right now, and currently, the state is in the process of dedicating more state resources to encourage tourists to visit the state. And it became evident to me, as I attended the meeting last Tuesday, that Tiverton should join this challenge of bringing more people into town, into the state, and providing more opportunities for the tourist dollar to be spent here, because we do need it. Now, Tiverton has some of the very outstanding historic venues in the state, and as tourists visit the historic sites, they will become aware of the restaurants, and one thing leads to another, and hopefully spending. We have coffee shops, and we have some very unique offerings in town. We have Fort Barton, Vedderwood Woods, and all of these things can be played off of. So let us join the government and introduce into Tiverton a sort of a business historic site day where we focus all of our energy and have many places in town open, so it's a big thing, it's not just, oh, well, that's a little thing, well, brother. And if we imagine we can target areas within Tiverton, for instance, the Stonebridge area, and the merchants there can get together and have something happening. And then 24 north, all the way to the state line, could be another area, they can have, they can get together as a group and plan some events. Bliss Four Corners is an important intersection already, and I think that we can play off of that, and the churches can participate, and just everybody make it like a street fair. And then we also have Stafford, the north end of Stafford Road, and I don't really know how much is going on there, but I don't think we should ignore them. I think we should encourage them to be part of the town and not just part of that end of Fall River, which I think a lot of people tend to think of. And last but not least, we have the Tiverton Four Corners, which already does its very amazing thing, so we do have samples of what can work. And the way I imagine it is that the atmosphere should be of one of like a street fair celebration in all the areas. It could be anchored by the existing businesses, but we could also have set up, invite people to put pop-up tents up and tables so that vendors and farmers could come and display and sell their products, or craftspeople, or any other person interested, as well as, I noticed a number of music dance studios and all of that, little kids, and I think little kids are great hands that would like to perform, so make it, invite the owners of the businesses to showcase their tumbling and their whatever else they do. And I think it can work, we can work off of what we have, which is not bad, which is good, and yes, it is good. And every location would have its unique flavor, and I think it might just work, because we really, really do need to do something. I go to these meetings, and I see within the last three years, I've seen Warren expand their art groups, they bring in Viking tour buses, those little Viking trolley things, and they have a fun going around visiting art galleries. Bristol is truly expanding, and I am so envious. Not only do they have a tourist center, they have a satellite tourist center, and I'm a very competitive person, and boy, oh, boy, it's not sitting well with me. And Barrington is starting an art exhibit type of venue, so we really, really are behind. And Little Compton exists, but just the existence of Little Compton between the vineyard and this picture-perfect town center, you can't, you know, you can't beat it. There is just a reality. Now, the big challenge, I think, is to have, because we have no umbrella group like a businessmen's or business people association, so somebody would, some group would have to be formed with, hopefully, your blessing, to kind of spearhead this, and I don't know if economic development would get involved with it, because they want to do more the bigger picture. And certainly, it's up to you to decide whether or not we even want it, but if we want it, we should set a date and have it happen this year. Maybe we can combine to an extent with Tiverton celebrates.
That's what I was just gonna say. It would be a perfect, maybe we could do it the whole week before the parade and the weekend of the parade, maybe incorporate it in there, because then we have a lot of people's attention, and everyone's around, so--
And then we can--
It happens until July.
Yeah.
But maybe we could talk to the celebrate Tiverton group also, and they could have some ideas, and maybe we could incorporate it that way.
Right, and I know there are hurdles, like for permitting for street vendors and all of that, but maybe we could have like a blanket--
Well, that's why I say maybe during that weekend, and maybe we can make it into a week.
Right, it's special.
At that time, we do get permits and all of that.
Right, you know, just make it easy and make it welcoming, so we can overcome some of these hurdles, and so is it possible, let's say, that you consider it in the very near future, and then within the next couple of weeks, we have an answer, so we can get some--
I will personally talk with the celebrate Tiverton people and see if we can, they can kind of give me some ideas, and maybe we could incorporate it--
Right, right.
--in that whole July.
The more people think about this and think of stuff, for instance, I think like the Historical Preservation Commission, and that could have--
I think we have to talk to everybody.
--a demonstration, yes, but there could be, is a potential of a demonstration up at Fort Barton, and all of these little things put together, I think, might just work.
I'll put it back on the agenda either in two weeks or at least a month from now.
Right.
But I'll try in two weeks to get some kind of answer.
Right.
And see if they would be interested in helping us do this.
That would be great. Also, as you know, I'm still working on this farmer's thing that will generate tourism, and the state has sent me these things, I have like 500 of each, so I shall bring some to the farm stands, and the farmers, if they want them, it's like a pricing thing.
Perfect.
It's very cute, and it's free. And did we ever come up with any signage rules for the farmers? Or should I just go to the code officer?
I would go to the code officer.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara, for your work.
They haven't done anything on the plan board.
Appointments and resignations. Historical Preservation Advisory Board vacancy term to expire October 15, 2016. Barbara Fisher Pelletier, 104 Bonneville Drive. Barbara, you want to come up? We do know a lot about you, though, but-- At this point, I usually ask, tell us a little bit about you, but we all are very familiar with you and your work. Why do you want to be on this board, would be my question.
Well, I was appointed to the Arts Council because I think there's a wealth of things that can be done that takes it out of town hall into the community, and then I'm thinking, gee, they're looking for people for the Historical Preservation Commission, and art and history really kind of toenail together, and if you can combine them, it just makes it easier if one, there's a person that crosses over and from one to the other without being two alien groups almost that are in competition. So I think sometimes we might have an exhibit of old things in Tiverton and things like that, so that was my way of thinking, because--
Thank you.
It was.
Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion.
I move that we appoint Barbara Pelletier to the Historic Preservation Advisory Board, term to expire October 15, 2016.
Second.
Motion been made in second, all those in favor. Thank you, Barbara. Conservation Commission vacancy term to expire 4/15/2016. Constance Fleckenstein, 58 Cottage Avenue. Oh, I know. Hi, Constance.
Good evening.
Just tell us a little bit about yourself and why you would like to be on the Conservation Commission.
Okay, I'm an outdoor person, so that is part of it. And my husband was a conservation officer for the state of Rhode Island, and before your time, my father was a foreman of Hathaway's Peach Orchard, and later, he became the head gardener at Rose Cliff for the Preservation Society. So I know a little bit about environmental issues.
Okay. Thank you. Entertainer motion?
I move that we appoint Constance Fleckenstein to the Conservation Commission, term to expire April 15, 2016.
Thank you. Second.
Motion been made in second, all those in favor. Welcome aboard, Constance.
Thanks very much.
Juvenile Hearing Board, first alternate vacancy term to expire 10/15/17. Amanda Souza, 160 Legelane.
Hi.
Hi, Amanda.
I'm a little nervous, I'm so sorry.
That's okay, everybody knows. Just tell us a little bit about yourself and why you would like to be on the juvenile hearing.
Well, I'm a native Rhode Islander. I'm actually from Portsmouth, but I moved to Tiverton about 10 years ago, and I fell in love with Tiverton. I love the community, I love the atmosphere, and I want to help as much as possible.
Any questions? You can sit down and--
All right, thank you.
Now, we need a criminal check for this, and that's all. Okay, right.
Yep.
Yep, that's right, yeah.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion?
I move that we appoint Amanda M. Souza to the Juvenile Hearing Board as first alternate for the vacancy expiring 10/15/2017.
Second.
Motion been made in second, all those in favor. Welcome.
Welcome aboard.
Unfinished Business Counselor Perry, discussion on treasurer's revenue and expense report.
Yes, Madam President, again, I keep bringing this up. I hope that other councils are looking at this also, and I know that you are, I know that the town administrator is. I just want to make sure that, you know, by the end of the year, we're gonna be, we won't be short in a lot of these departments. I'm looking at the transfers here to date, and I believe it's $109,000, which, if you multiply it, whatever the $47 million budget, you're looking at like a .05% of transfers that are being made. So for those hate sayers out there that say that we do all these kinds of crazy transfers, .5% of the budget, I don't think is that crazy. What I'd like to do this year, and only looking back at what happened last year at the town financial referendum, and taking money out of the general fund, and it looks like it's gonna hit the general fund again, for another 200 or 300--
It's been proposed to hit the general fund.
Proposed, the proposed, right. I would highly recommend, highly, that these departments spend down your money, so that these 50 vote-getters out there don't grab it and spend it the way that they want to. So, you know, take a good look at it. It doesn't seem to be worthwhile anymore to try and put money in the bank, because we've got these people coming after us, trying to run the town, and think they know how to run it better than we do. And it just gets frustrating, you know, sitting at a budget committee and sitting on this council, you know, you get people out there who think that if they want to do a better job, then they should have put their names in the hat, and get up here and do stuff. But to get 50 votes and then put in a budget that is totally not what this town needs or deserves, is getting ridiculous. Madam President, if I could--
Um, yeah, I just want to say one thing. I was thinking that if we make any transfers, it probably should be in the paving account. So if we have any extra money left, which we probably have a lot of extra money, but we should look at that paving account and add to it, because we do know we're in trouble there, we do know about the potholes, and maybe we can spend a little money there that we have in this budget. Just an idea that I had, because we all do know that the paving account can't be touched, and it will roll over. So we may think about doing that also. Ms. Councilman Souza?
I know that it appears, just looking at this, that we'll finish the fiscal year, but the general fund itself will have almost twice as much money as it needs to have, if I'm understanding this correctly, over the 3%, which is the charter requirement. So I just, in my personal opinion, is the Budget Committee could have taken money out of the general fund to lower the tax rate, and they probably would have had a pallet of a budget. As far as the people that have come out and voted for it, 50 people may have voted to put the budget out. Three of them were on the Budget Committee and suggested a lot of requests to cut the budget down and to bring the tax rate down, so--
Do I only have one question? You approved the town council's budget, right?
I had proposals for cuts that weren't--
But you, it was unanimous approval, so you could have brought that up at the time and tried to get us to--
I did. I sat there and I made proposals for cuts. And they were about $200 and some thousand dollars worth of cuts that could have been made, in my opinion.
You could have voted against the budget.
I also felt that we could take money out of the reserve general fund to bring the tax rate down, and that's, well, I don't agree 100% with the petitioners' budget, at least they were thinking about bringing the tax rates down. And looking at the long-term picture in this town, where if we want economic development, we have to be competitive with our neighbors. It's ridiculous that we're $4 and $5 per thousand higher than our neighbors.
It's a fake numbers.
All right, I don't think that right here is the--
No, anyone's heard people badmouth that aren't here to defend themselves.
Well, they could be here, and they should--
No, they sat through the entire budget process, and they put a budget in.
Justin Katz did not show up till--
The three ladies that sat in those chairs who I'm talking about, and they're also part of that budget.
The only thing that I do want to say is the 3% is what's recommended by the state. We can't, well, no, no, no.
Charter.
It's the charter, but that doesn't necessarily mean that more can't be put in.
I know it doesn't.
And more isn't--
But I'm just saying that there is a large unreserved general fund that could, portion of it could have been used to bring the tax rate down. If the Budget Committee, in my opinion, had looked at what's going on in this town with people, then they would have been advised to take some money out of the general fund and bring the level of the rate down.
I don't think that this is really the place in time.
Dave brought it up.
There's a meeting on Thursday that we can all hash it out.
Well, I mean, I'll just say this, that it comes down to a fundamental difference of opinion, Joe, and we disagree on this matter, but I'd like to think that you don't believe that we are somehow not thought about these issues. believe that we are somehow not thought about these issues, or the budget committee hasn't thought about these issues. I think we have. And just because we differ in our opinions on how to spend the money and how to budget money and how to address capital needs in the future doesn't necessarily invalidate the work that this council and the budget committee has done over the past five or six years in achieving those goals.
Well, we all have our opinion, and as you said, I agree with that.
And also keep in mind that they not only took the general fund, but they also cut the school committee and the town council to over $300,000, which I feel is irresponsible, because I don't know how we will function. But, we'll move on. David, you all set?
Yeah.
Okay. Unfinished business, Cynthia Avenue, discussion and possible vote on determination of ownership and town services and town solicitors. Madam Amanda, I'm going to start with Stephanie first.
Madam President, I think it might be helpful if I just point out a few of the primary points of the memorandum that we have previously provided to you, and then it's your pleasure to ask any questions or to flesh this out further. In reviewing the details of this matter, we actually looked at the street advisories committee's file on Cynthia Avenue. We conducted research in the Tiverton land evidence records. We reviewed the file that was compiled by Attorney Doherty, who represents some of the property owners abiding Cynthia Avenue. We looked at a legal file that had been provided to us by the previous solicitor, and we reviewed relevant case law and ordinances with regards to this. Cynthia Avenue was created in 1958 by a plat that was entitled, quote, "Plan of Land Drawn for Arthur St. Laurent and Florence J. St. Laurent by W. Van Kalla, dated May 9th, 1958." In that map, Cynthia Avenue was named and clearly delineated on the map. There is really a two-step process for a street to become a fully public street. The first is that insipid dedication, meaning that the plat has been recorded with streets delineated on it, and the second is an acceptance of the street by official action or public use. In this instance, we know that on the plat map Cynthia Avenue was designated and delineated and recorded. Cynthia Avenue has never been officially accepted by the town of Tiverton Council as a public street. There's been no action of the council to accept it as a public street. Certainly, the abiding property owners are claiming that Cynthia Avenue was accepted by the town based on public use, including but not limited to the maintenance of Cynthia Avenue by the town over the years, trash pickup and snow plowing, and the granting of pole placements for street lighting. It should be noted that the Tax Assessor's Office confirmed that Cynthia Avenue is not taxed as private land. In conflicting fact, the conflicting facts are, understand, given the ordinance in effect at the time of the various subdivisions of Cynthia Avenue neighborhood, and we actually like to thank Matt for bringing that old ordinance to our attention, which was Section 23.5E of the then subdivision ordinances. That ordinance specifically stated that approval and recording of a final subdivision plat by the board shall be deemed the acceptance by the public of any street or other public areas offered therein for dedication, that shall not impose any duty upon the town to maintain or improve such dedicated area until the town council shall have authorized maintenance or improvement of the same in accordance with the laws of the state and the town governing public expenditures of such purpose. So, it is really our conclusion at this point in time that Cynthia Avenue is a grandfathered public street. The legal framework for that classification of Cynthia Avenue as a public street did not impose an obligation on the town to improve or maintain it. Maintenance can be performed on Cynthia Avenue without the obligation of bringing the condition of the street up to current town standards, so long as that maintenance is authorized by the town council. So, it would be our recommendation this evening that if the town is willing to accept our legal conclusions, that it would really be a directive to the DPW director to maintain the street in its current condition and make any technical upgrades that need to be happened at this time, but it does not need to be brought up to current street standards.
Any discussion? Questions?
We never had, Madam President. Had to give them the lifesavers. I don't think we ever had the question on the engineering on that street as far as the drainage issue in the middle. Just wondering, is that going to obligate the town at some point?
The obligation would only be to maintain it at its current standard right now. So, if, you know, if there's major potholes as a result of the winter, to fill those in with gravel or whatnot, to bring it up to where it would have been before the winter, but it is not to bring them up to the current requirements.
So, basically, as we continue to raise the grade and build the crown in, the water's going to shed into people's yards. I'm just wondering, it's, that's what's going to happen eventually if we just continue to pile gravel there?
I don't know that it would be the DPW who's the active to just continue to pile gravel, but there's some action that...
That's kind of what's happened recently. Well...
Mr. Boosie? At this point, what we have to do?
Council Souza is correct. The road is probably a foot higher than it was originally built for, and all of the drainage is going on, private property, because there's no catch basins. And it's running down the road to, past the midpoint where there's a low point. And where there's a low point, the water obviously goes, and it's running out of driveway. So, that's the issue I think the Council Souza is bringing up, that the filling and grading twice a year is one thing, but more maintenance is going to be needed as we fill and grade and we fill and grade. And this is just not Cynthia Ave, any of the roads that we do are running into that problem, or it's becoming an issue where they need more than just grading and filling. They need to be dug out and rebuilt, or dug out and paved. They'll just continue to be that problem. I mean, that's what gravel roads are. They're constant maintenance.
Could I interject? This road was paved before, so I'm assuming that they're going to bring it up to that spot.
Well, I think the pavement's down about a foot, and I think it's all broken up.
But that was caused, we need to find out why that was caused. For over eight years, this low road was not even taken care of. So, when we bring this up to current places, I believe that these people deserve their paved road. The way it was before, and with the photos that they had for many years, this road is a paved road.
How much would it be cost to bring it up? I'm not paying a price, but...
Well, just to dig it out and pave it would be $65,000, not including adding the drainage. Eastman's bounds, recorded plans, you're getting, you know, this has to be done. You could add $20,000, $25,000 more to that, so you're talking $80,000, $85,000 to rebuild that road and handle the drainage if you can handle it. I don't know if you can send it to other people's property or not.
Do we need to rebuild it completely? Is there any way to...
I think, you know, over time, like we've been doing, if you want, we just grade it and fill it twice a year and make it passable so we can plow. That was the whole issue that we went, I didn't write a letter saying I'm stopping services, I wrote a letter saying I can't provide the services that we want to provide because the road was terrible.
So, the question is, is why did it become that way?
Because it's a...
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm going to excuse yourself. We have just got proof that it was a public road. This road was paved prior to this, and it was deteriorating for the last eight years. These people are taxpayers, and their road and their rights should be restored. So, I'm going back to, this road needs to be brought back to where it was. It was a paved road, and we can discuss what the problem is. But if you're saying $85,000, I would like to have a bid. Someone else could see what the bids are.
That sounds awfully expensive.
Madam President, if I can make a comment. The last time I went to the Streets Committee, you had applicants from Bulldog Lane, I believe.
Yep.
What was your estimate then as to how much it would cost to redo that road?
Excuse me, Mr. Lambert, we're talking...
No, 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 my point is, let me get to the point. I've been arguing now for a couple of years, and I believe sometime in June, I hope to get on the agenda, an issue that I think is important to this town. And that is that we finally put together a plan for the town to assume responsibilities for these streets. The reason I mention Bulldog Lane is because the applicant at that time, and please correct me, Mr. Odell, because you were there if I make a mistake. The applicant at that time, who was looking to get Bulldog Lane restored, read a comment from the president of the Tiverton Town Council from 1960.
Yes, sir.
Complaining about the fact we had all of these unaccepted roads in Tiverton. Now, in 55 years, we've done absolutely nothing. And it seems to me that every other town council meeting, we have an issue like this. And of course, if you want to find out what the real mess is, you go to the Streets Committee and listen to one article after another. My concern is that this is just going to continue for another 55 years. While I sympathize with everyone who has one of these, a problem, I don't think it's going to help this town to begin addressing one street at a time, $50,000 here, $40,000 here, $60,000 here. We have to come up with a comprehensive plan that once and for all is going to address this. And hopefully, the proposal that I put together will begin the discussion sometime in June. By the way, I sympathize with what council has already said about the predicament that all of these applicants are in. But once we open up this Pandora's Box, I have absolutely no idea where it's going to stop. If you go to the Streets Committee and you listen to one applicant after another, you can see the people lining up. And once we make a decision, ah, yes, we'll do anything more than bare maintenance, we're going to have applicants looking for the same type of treatment.
Well, I think at this agenda item, we need to accept Cynthia Avenue because that's, and as far as the maintenance, we're going to have to, like you say, Jay, there's more roads coming to try to get accepted. So, I think we do have to have a plan, and, but this agenda item is to accept Cynthia Avenue as a public road. And we've been listening to this since I got on the council two and a half years ago. So, I think we can put this one to bed and just accept this road at this time.
Madam President, if I could just, with the caveat that the maintenance can be performed on Cynthia Avenue without the obligation of bringing it up to the current street. So, I just would like that to be part of it.
And then we need to address the other streets and also the maintenance of these streets, but at least make Cynthia Avenue a public way, because they've been here in front of us for two and a half years.
Could, though, I'd just like to note that the items that make this an acceptable street via, you know, I mean, not, because obviously it started off, the original owner said she didn't want it to be...
Oh, exactly, and we all know that.
So, it was the placing of the light poles. What, I mean, if, for instance, what's the difference between this and Bulldog? Why...
We didn't ask her to look at both.
I haven't looked at the rest and say initially that it was on a plat, and while the individual, I stated in a planning board meeting that she did not wish for it to become a public street. At that point in time, in reviewing the minutes, the planning board never took any action on that. So, we didn't make any specific motion saying we are going to accept the applicant's plan not to have this become a public street. So, that issue, while it was represented, was really always left out. And so, then it was the continuous, that there was continuous maintenance, that the poles were put in, that garbage pickup has occurred, that the plows have, so it's a culmination of a number of things along with that plat that originally designated as such that makes it the public street. It does, however, apply to the initial ordinance that Matt brought to our attention that has a different caveat, it almost puts it in a different caveat of a public street, where the maintenance level is different than a street that would be accepted today.
So, because it was... I'm sorry, I was going to say, that was going to be my question. While we can assume an obligation as a town council to maintain the street at some certain standard, we don't have to legally accept the street. And that's the concern that I have. Once you begin legally accepting the streets, we would then have an obligation, I hate to say this, but with all due respect to the applicants here, if your street looked like my street, which is at least in part accepted, it would be a pretty dumpy street. But at least in theory, we would be maintaining and providing maintenance and paving the street and providing plowing. That's my concern. Can we, I don't think we can afford to do that with every street in Tiverton without coming up with an overall plan. My suggestion would be, okay, we agree, as you suggest in your memorandum, that we will, that we accept an obligation to maintain the property, to maintain the street, but we're not legally accepting it.
Well, so I think the caveat is, is that you can accept it as a grandfathered public street, so that it puts it into the separate category of the previous ordinance that applied. It is not being accepted as a public street today, but it's being recognized by the council as a grandfathered public street. It is not a public street back then.
Madam President, if I may. The councilman Lambert, to you through the president, I mean, what we see here is a rule that was effectively confirmed by the court in the LA Realty case, twice, which is that when the property rights vested at the time, based upon the law that's on the books at the time, especially if the owner takes proactive actions to take advantage of those rules at the time. So, not all property rules are bright line rules, but this one is awfully close. It says when the planning board recorded those plats, it accepted that as a public way. What that does is, it creates some comfort zone for the director of DPW. He's not damaging public property by being on those streets, and he's not going to be liable for certain things that may or may not have happened while he's busy. The only obligation, there is no obligation, because it's permissive in the statute. The town council may, and so depending on the budget constraints, and to bring the whole thing, because my brain sometimes works in wicked ways, we talk about this budget and the future of the town, planning for the future. I'm going to take a SWAG, I won't tell you what SWAG stands for, but I'm going to take a SWAG that the taxpayers who live on unaccepted streets agree that this contributor to the town taxes are almost equal to the existing balance of the general fund. So, what would you do with it then? Wouldn't you ask them?
I'd just like to ask the council, I think it would be in the town's interest to receive three estimates from three qualified highway and street building firms as to the cost to reasphalt Cynthia Ave. And the reason that I suggest that is because the cost is significantly less than what's being discussed here tonight. I know that for a fact, but I can't give you a paper to that effect tonight. But I can contact three, Rhode Island licensed excavator, street contractors to give three estimates to pave it, to bring it up to previous standard. I think you'd be very surprised at the number. It'd be much cheaper to do that once than to grade and fill twice a year for perpetuity. Just a suggestion.
Well, have the town administrator...
I know, yes, but I'll tell you one thing, we always go to bid for a project this big. I'll have you three by the end of the week. The only problem is that you don't know what's under there. Without doing core testing, we don't know what kind of sub base you have. So, if we pave it and it falls apart in five years, because, so it would require some engineering, and that's what I went to rather. And once you pave, water starts going in places you may not expect. So, it's, the gentleman that would give these estimates would be the company engineers, and they would look at it before giving the estimate. Because you definitely got to know what's under that road. We don't know what's there, but it's...
Any other discussion?
I think we, the agenda item is to accept the road, and then all this other stuff can...
Here's the question I have. Is that necessary since we've by de facto accepted it 30, 40, 50, 60 years ago, whatever it was? We're just acknowledging now that it is or was accepted by virtue of the regulations at the time and by recording the plot.
I think it would just be for the Public Works Director, wouldn't it, to advise him that this comes under the umbrella?
The motion that we've acknowledged that Cynthia Avenue is a grandfathered public street. The council's acknowledged it, not that we've accepted it, but we've acknowledged that it is.
Well, I'm going to vote to support it, but I have the feeling that what we're approving is sort of a second-rate maintenance program for this particular street. And maybe the next street will be a third rate, and the next street will be a fourth rate. But I'm going to support it with the hope that the town will eventually address the real issue in town. And it's all of the streets.
I don't think we are... I don't think we are assigning a maintenance program to this street at all tonight. What we're doing is acknowledging that there is a legal framework in which we are bound to, and that in, by virtue of our action in sometime in the future, we can authorize certain repairs, improvements, alterations to that roadway. Which we're not prepared to do tonight, clearly, because we don't know the scale and the scope of the operation.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion.
I'll give it a shot. I move that we accept Cynthia Avenue as a grandfathered public street and direct the DPW director to maintain Cynthia Avenue at current conditions until further study and cost estimates are received.
Second.
Can you just, I'm sorry, just one more time, read that back? I want to make sure I have that.
I move that we accept Cynthia Avenue as a grandfathered public street and direct the DPW director to maintain Cynthia Avenue to current conditions until such time as we can...
Further study.
Further study the situation and collect bids.
I have a couple of comments. The first is, we don't direct the DPW director to do anything. We advise or request the town administrator to do so.
You change that.
Just, that's a semantical thing, but we don't have the authority to direct Steve to do anything. The other is, is there a difference, Stephanie, between accepting it as, I think the language, accepting it as a grandfathered street or acknowledging it as a previously accepted grandfathered street?
I think it's six of one, half dozen of the other. I think acknowledging it, you know, the count, what we could say is, back in the day of the ordinance that was adopted by the town council, at that point in time, it would have had the same effect. So I don't think there's...
I will amend the motion to...
I would also like to know that this road was taut at one time, and for the last five or six years, for whatever reason, it became dispossessed. So it needs to be brought up to where it was, a paved road.
Well, eventually, we are going to have to discuss that with several streets.
We're going to have to get on the list.
Yeah, we're going to have to discuss, a lot of accepted streets for years I've paved correctly, so...
Why do we have to deal with this the last eight years when it was only an accepted road?
Come to the microphone. You name an address.
Shane General, forty Cynthia Avenue. This has been going on for many years. This road has caused many car repairs. It's been passable at times. You've all been there. You know what it was like. This was a paved road. Why did it get to this, to this standard that it was at, that it's at now? It should have never been let go like this.
But it has, so now we have...
But why has it? Can we find out why?
We can't answer.
Us as taxpayers, we deserve some kind of answers why this road was let go to this condition.
Just about the same road has been.
Because it's an unaccepted road for maintenance by the town council.
They did all the pounds, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. No, 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 no.
That's why it's falling apart, because it was unaccepted and we didn't maintain it.
Because, I think what it was, was it was the, it was the knowledge it was unaccepted, that's what everyone thought, but obviously not. So now this council is trying to address it. But obviously, we don't have $60,000 to repair a lot of the streets that are out there. So accepting is the first step. Mr. Lambert is right, we have to get some kind of plan because there's a lot of streets in this situation. You, except my apologies, I wasn't there at the time, but I think it was always, it was always an unaccepted road on the books, and that's why that was done. But obviously...
I mean, we're trying to, we're trying to make the best policy going forward on a lot, not only this issue, but a lot of issues from a time and actions that were taken forty, fifty, sixty years ago. And very, very frequently, people didn't bother to write things down. It's as simple, as stupid as that in some instances, that the minutes don't reflect anything that was said substantively, or the things that were supposed to be done weren't done in history. And while I, you know, I wish we could go and make those documents available and make those people make decisions that were on record and create the standard of evidence we have today going forward, we can't do that. So as best we can, we're trying to fix this problem. And I apologize too, but I can't take responsibility for something somebody did fifty years ago.
This is the first step, and this is what you, I think you've wanted. Of course, you do want a perfect road, and we are, we, there's many people that want perfect roads. So we have to have a plan because we certainly don't have the money to fix all these roads at this point.
Madam President, may I have just a...
Just, yeah, very short.
I'm Patrick Doherty. I represent Audrey Gladio with resident Cynthia Avenue. I think, I think I can sense a huge reticence on the part of the council of not wanting to open the floodgates. And I understand there's some, something in the nature of 194 roads that are in question here in the town of Tiverton. But I just want to give you some confidence in whatever your decision making is going forward here, that these are a fact-by-fact intensive inquiry as to each and every road. And the evidence with regard to Cynthia Avenue is quite different than what I imagine it is for a number of other roads in the town. And the big issue here is that prior town councils and prior public works directors had maintained this road. It was paved, it was accepted by public use. And I'm worried about falling back from that position in any action that you take here tonight. Because once the town had accepted it through public use, and once it was already brought up to specifications, it's a little bit disingenuous, and I don't mean that with any disrespect towards any of the president members of this council, but it's a little bit disingenuous of a municipality or a town to say, well, all right, well, we let it go for so long, now, well, we'll just let you come back, you know, a quarter of the way. So I would urge you to think about what the past history was with respect to this road. It's clear that prior conclusions that this road was not publicly accepted through public use were incorrect. And well, prior to all of your tenure here on the council, this road was brought up to a much higher level than it is right here today as it stands. So I would ask that instead of being overly concerned about the floodgates getting open for that other 194, however many unaccepted public streets there are, you look at the real facts of this case, that it was accepted, that public use has accepted it, there has been exercise of dominion and control, and it was brought up to a much higher standard than it sits today.
Thank you. The only thing I'll, and I wanted to mention this earlier, but the fact that we are acknowledging that it is an accepted road, I don't think, and the way I look at this is, it's on par with every other road that's in town. And I, there are plenty of roads in town that were formally accepted in subdivisions in the forties and fifties and look like they are the roads that you would find in, you know, some third world country because they are just destroyed. And they're on the list, just like all the other roads. And we'll get to, we have to put together a plan for all of these, and that's the next step. But I think, you know, we're, we're working against a lot of impossibilities, and we're doing the best that we can.
I agree with Mr. Patrick here. It's the unknown that we have. We have all these other streets out there. It's unknown to us what we're going to find, you know, once they start coming forward.
I'm not even so worried about that as much as I'm, you know, I appreciate that each of these is unique and each of these we'll deal with, but it doesn't necessarily put any one particular road to the top of the list of needs of public roads in town. Because there are some public roads that are, they are really in awful shape. And, you know, the needs are there. We have to figure out, and that, to that point, I agree with Councilman Lambert, we have to find, you know, a very comprehensive solution to the, to the capital needs of paving in this town.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor in a second.
Yeah, and Joan's going to amend her motion.
Can we state the motion, please?
Yeah. I was going to amend the motion. So we stated, I move that we accept Cynthia Avenue as a grandfathered public street and direct the town administrator to maintain Cynthia Avenue with, at current conditions until such time as a plan and bids can be obtained to address the issue.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstained?
Are you opposed?
I have no...
Pastor Williams, Derek...
Matt, President of the section house.
Yeah, I just, that's mine too. Councilor DeMajeris updated on FY 2015/16 budget. I have no updates. Does any, I mean, we've already had a little discussion. Yeah. Those two.
Pastor's still here?
The only thing I'd like to say is Thursday night at seven o'clock at the middle school, I believe. No. High school, I'm sorry. Will be the perfect hearing on the budget, and both budgets will be presented. I urge everybody to attend. Always watch it on TV. I believe we are filming it. All right. New business. Pastor Williams, Derek Amicable Congregational Church. I'm sorry.
We having a good night?
Planned addition to Amicable Church, and request for fire departments, commercial project review.
So I was here two weeks ago, and you were kind enough to advertise my run. We had a great run, we had great weather. I, and you may recall that at the end, I asked you to bring your checkbooks. I hope you did.
I did it, brother.
Sorry, forgot. I've got more. Here, why don't you still move? I, there's a possibility that you all got a packet of material by email from my treasure. There's a possibility? No?
How long ago?
How long ago? Within the last two weeks. But that's, that's okay. It's not, it's not that important. It basically, it basically gives you more detail than what I give here. I hope you all know that we're going to add on to the church. And this is the brochure that shows it. We are not currently handicapped accessible, and it would be great if we were. And so what we thought was an $800,000 project with a $500,000 first phase turned out to be a $1.2 million project with an $800,000 first phase. The first phase, however, will have the shell of the new building, which you can see in the night light. The architectural things are really wonderful. And if you open this up, two more, you'll find a couple of things, the addition in the daylight and a pledge sheet just for you. I think most people know the church, we, as I say, the shell of the building will be up, the entrance way, it will be usable, there'll be a lift that looks like an elevator, it will cover all the floors, and there will be handicapped accessible restrooms on the lower level. Ultimately, when the whole thing is finished, we have great faith that we can do this, there'll be actually five restrooms on, two on the level where a hall is and the sanctuary is, and one on a new level we're adding. They, they being the church working on this, wanted us to remind you that while we worship there on a regular basis, we see our goal, our, not goal, one of our purposes is to be an anchor in the town, to help people in need and to help be a meeting place for those who don't have a meeting place. We're excited, the library's going to add some, but we're confident that people will still come to Amicable Church to meet. We have had for years an Al-Anon group, we do community blood drives, the Girl Scouts have had their leaders meet there on a regular basis, the Cub Scouts are meeting there, we do food drives, the Greater Tiverton Community Chorus practices there, we do monthly dinners. We did Thanksgiving baskets this past year. I have a member who got organizing and raising, and he did 135 baskets for around town, the town of Tiverton, serving over 350 people. The Tiverton Historical Society meets there, keeps their records in our building, the Tiverton Garden Club meets there, and most important, it's a polling station. So when we become handicapped accessible, we can move from the dining, which is a nice place and people like the coffee, but a little tight, to a hall upstairs, and we'll, and we'll have even more room. And I'm told potentially bake sales if I, but we'll let the state deal with that. So here's why I'm here. You, yes. I had a question, right, to get right to the chase. I don't know why in the agenda item, you seem to concede that what you're involved in is a commercial enterprise. What you're asking us to do is to waive the review fee as a commercial enterprise, which would total, as I recall, something like $4,000.
What would make us a commercial enterprise?
That's right. What you're saying is you want us to waive the fee.
And my question is, what would make us a commercial enterprise?
Why are you assuming that you're a commercial enterprise? I don't consider a church to be a commercial...
Oh, well, thank you. Then you'll, then you'll be surprised that if you're building a house in town and the fire department has to review that there's a $75 fee.
Right.
Standard. You know what the fee was for Amicable Church review?
Four thousand and something.
Two hundred and thirty-three dollars. So we're...
A church.
For the church. So our request is if you would give us the money back. It just sort of waived that fee. We have an $800,000 project, we're at $430,000 in pledges, so we're still moving towards our goal. We could really use that $4,233 in the building.
Did you already pay?
We had to because we have to keep moving. I've got a contractor ready to go to work, and he can't do it till he gets the approval. You follow how it works?
So you paid a commercial project review fee?
That's, because that's, that's the law in town. You call up Cox Communications and know they're on the business.
Why would, is there some definition that says a church will be...
Under, under the fire code, it does come as a commercial enterprise. That's right, it's not a residential property.
May I actually address this for one moment? On August 27th, 2007, at a regular town council meeting, the fee structure was actually proposed to the town council with regards to this. And it is true that anything that's non-residential under the fire code does apply as a commercial. However, at that point in time, Councilor Carroll made a motion that by resolution to adopt the proposed fees for the plan and for both the residential plan review as well as the commercial rate. The town-owned buildings were exempt at that point in time, and still are, from the fee requirement. And it additionally stated that the town council may waive all or part of the fee requirements to any nonprofit organization. And all fees collected by the fire department for the plan reviews be deposited into a restricted account. So at the point in time that this was being adopted by a resolution, I think that was actually considered and the nonprofit status or was taken into account. So it is at this point in time, the council's pleasure to take up.
And that's why, the council was a little bit ahead of me, but that's exactly why we told Amicable Church, the only person who can waive that fee is this body. We can't do that. I have to charge it.
Nonprofit pastor, remember that? You're a nonprofit.
We have actually verified that. We've definitely just said, Secretary of State's office, that they are domestic nonprofit corporation with an identification number of 000026417.
And again, that's entirely in your purview. I cannot do that, so that's why it's here. That's why it's here before you.
We have no complaints in the bottom. Okay, all right.
Does anyone like to make a motion?
Going forward as well, in any fees you incur or plan to incur through the development process, and we did it for the library, because large, large-scale projects tend to have a strange scale as to how the building fees and review fees are applied. So we tend to look at those, especially with nonprofits. So I'd be happy to make a motion that we allow, we exempt Amicable Congregational Church from paying the new plan review fee, and we refund the previously paid sum.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I know on the library, we could waive some of the fees, but not all the fees.
There are state fees that we, inspection fees and permit fees.
Cannot.
Well, that is also under the building code.
Right. And that's what I'm saying.
There's certain fees under the building code that pays for the inspectors. And that's where some of the waiving, some of the waiving on the library came to the building side. Outside, we did not charge them because they were a municipal building at the time.
Yeah, and that's why I was suggesting when you start to erect a structure and when you start to pull permits and things like that, that's when you're going to have to come back to us and review the fee schedule for the development of the project.
Did you understand that?
I'll be back. Only if it applies. I mean, I also worry about the income for the town. And I hate, I do hate taking away because there's roads to be paved. I understand that. But I also believe that what we're doing is a great service too. And we've got a place to put a hole in the ground that will be soon. Any other questions about this?
Further discussion for the?
I have a, did we add any more parking spaces? Not, no, not at the moment. We have plans. We're looking north. Yeah, is it, sorry? No, no. The north parking lot, we're hoping we can expand a little bit towards the north. That we can have some space there. The church does hope on Sunday morning that a new building will increase the number of people parking in the parking lot. But I don't think it's going to change things much. The Monday through Saturday parking is just, it's going to just make the building more accessible and more usable.
Is there any way we can frame this motion so that the Reverend doesn't have to come back?
No, no, no. I appreciate that thought, but we need to go this by means basis, I think, in fairness. And I've learned so much these last two times. One is the patience that we have, while we are impatient in our closed meetings.
Thank you.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, all second.
Don't forget your color display here.
Oh, yes. Got to put back in the perch.
Town administrative ratification of amendment to administrative assistant Mary Lou Sullivan's contract.
My president will attempt to be brief. I first want to detail something that's actually fairly important for people to recognize. All of our department events are contract employees with the town. They're exempt employees on call 24/7 and their responsibility is laid out in the charter belonging by the ordinance. The executive assistant to the administrator does a great deal more than answer my phone and work my schedule. In fact, the matter is those things are minor. She administers virtually all of our insurance relationships with our employees, maintains our personnel files, and generally conducts a number of the orientation and paperwork follow-through that actually have administered to the town in a good way. So as soon as we separate from an employee, she terminates out individuals' life insurance, dental insurance, everything through all the carriers. There's a significant amount of responsibility involved with the job. This amendment only does one thing. It adds a week of vacation to her overall package for the next two years. And locks her into that schedule in accordance with the rest of her contract. She would stay at three weeks. This year, because I was very new in the job and didn't have a sound basis to evaluate her performance, I recommended a ninety-five percent for my executive assistant, which is the lowest I've recommended for any other person I've ever has gotten to. Vacation time won't cost us any money, but it will be a benefit to her. It's what she asked for. So during the summer months, where it is her habit to be elsewhere and enjoying the environment around here where she's grown up. So I didn't think it was a big ask. So respectfully, I request that the council extend the scope of this employee for the next two years, which is to add another five days of vacation to each year.
Who would that total out to? For the number of days? Two weeks or what is it?
Fifteen days. So it goes from ten days to fifteen days, which is three business weeks.
If you can accumulate, I hope that's three years after.
That's right. Carry forward. No more than fifteen.
Is she, is she in union position?
No, she's not.
That's the only thing I was wondering.
She's non-union, non-exempt.
Entertained a motion? Or a discussion?
Well, I move that we approve and ratify the amendment to the administrative assistant's contract reflecting the vacation paragraph modification.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion. Just one question. Are all the contracts written that you carry forward three weeks? I thought it was only you could carry forward one week.
It's actually ten days for everybody.
Those two.
Any further discussion? Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Tricia Hilton Conservation Commission requesting public hearing for proposed amendment to Tiverton sign regulation article 12, planning board recommendation. Hi, Trish.
Hello. Good evening. You have before you a proposed ordinance amendment for the sign regulations, Article 12 of the zoning code, which would allow the existing gasoline retailers in Tiverton to replace their plastic number price display signs with remotely controlled LED technology and a positive finding from the planning board after their review. So if it suits...
Would you like a public hearing?
Suits the council, yes. And we'd like to ask if you would schedule a public hearing.
The only question I have is these two drafts are the same. There's no difference between these two.
What two?
There is one attached to the...
Right.
None of them relate or are numbered.
You know, I think...
It's very difficult to reference them, but...
Councilor Pelletier, that may have been my fault in that when Kate Micho sent up her copy of the positive findings, she sent a copy of it. And then when I put the agenda request, I stapled a copy of it to my agenda request. So I think you ended up with two copies.
The only other question I have is, is this legal non-conforming signs in all new language or just the italicized sections?
Just the italicized sections. Nancy's not here, but we'll do it as soon as possible. We'll have her advertise appropriately and forward with.
Just a question. Has this been reviewed by the Economic Development Committee? Have they even looked at it?
Economic development?
No.
It would be if we asked them to, or asked Matt to ask them to.
Does that, I'd like to have the Economic Development Committee weigh in on this.
They could. And it could be, and their findings or recommendation could be discussed at the public hearing.
That's fine. I just, I'm going to make sure that we have some input from them.
So we can have Matt forward this to them. I need a motion to, do I need a motion to? To schedule a public hearing?
You would take motion and petition to direct the town manager to refer this to the Economic Development Corporation for...
We don't want to say that the Economic Development Corporation, but we'll send it to the...
Development Committee.
We don't want to involve those guys. Alright, I'll move that we request Nancy to come up with a date for a public hearing for the proposed amendment to the Tiverton sign regulation and request the town administrator to request that the EDC prepare, review and prepare comments and recommendations for that time.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Thank you, Trish, for all your work.
Yeah, probably.
Town administrator discussion in possible action regarding major changes attempted agreement with local number 17038. I am... Do you want to do this? You want to wait till May? Is it the May 4th hearing?
That doesn't make sense to, do the whole thing at once.
So we'll table it until then. Bids and requests for proposals. Tony McGowan, tax collector, requests to waive bid process for printing of tax bills. Hi, Tony.
I am requesting tonight that we waive the bid process for the printing of our tax bills and utilize the services of Vision Government Technologies, which is the company that we used last year. The accessory I met with Vision right after the tax bills went out and we worked out a lot of issues that have been, that happened after last tax bills. We've also been working with them on an ongoing basis all year. And we've resolved the interest issue, which has been a huge problem with the office for many years. So by that being worked out, we're able to move forward. And this year, I'd like to include in the tax bills the ability to view your tax bill online, look at your tax summary, see how much, you know, you owe. And this is something that's never been able to be done before because we never had the interest correct. So it's a step in moving forward, moving the entire tax bill process and towards automation. And if we don't use this company, then we're, we'd be going out to a printer and moving backwards. We wouldn't be moving forward. This new, it's called tax bill web posting, will allow the taxpayer to actually go in and opt out of their tax bill, which is something we've discussed many times and possibly save money down the road as far as printing and postage. So that's another advantage. The last thing that wouldn't be implemented on this tax bill, but perhaps for the next one, would be the credit card payments through Vision also. So again, it's all moving in the direction that we've been trying to do, which is more automated information, making the office easier. So that is why, and this is the only company that can do this. So they truly are the sole source for getting these services provided to the town. So that is why I'm here tonight to request the waiving of the bid process and utilize their services for this year's tax bills.
Any discussion?
Just, oh, I'm sorry. I was just wondering what the price was to print the tax bills. What's the dollar amount on this?
The actual printing of the tax bills costs about $6,300 and the postage is just over $6,000. So you're looking at a $12,000 total bill. Both of which come out of the line items that are available in my budget.
The question I have is, in this, it's a very short gizmo, but in the contract that we would ultimately sign with these people, is there language that guarantees a delivery date? And if not?
It's in the top little paragraph and it's all contingent upon when we provide the data to them. So if the financial town referendum goes and everything goes as planned and we have the tax rate, then this is a true figure that we could have, the information to them on June 1st.
The problem I have with this is they had the information last year and they screwed up.
Yeah, they have many equipment barriers and...
So what I'm wondering is, is there a way we can organize this such that there's a or else kind of, the language is fine, the above completion date is contingent upon, and they have an estimated completion date. But in the event that they fail to deliver on that, what is the consequence? So we didn't really get a heck of a lot of compensation or whatever.
We got some. They did, you know, give us some money.
It was a huge pain in the butt. I mean, for you, not for me.
I agree. At this point, we just really have their, you know, their word and good faith that they would be able to do it this year. They've done a lot of changes.
Prepay installments or?
If they didn't, well, the postage has to be prepaid upfront, but the actual billing doesn't get paid until actually the bills are in the mail. So I don't know. I'm not a legal person as far as what we would do if they didn't go out on time. But I do believe that we've resolved a lot of the issues and I don't expect that to happen this year.
Any other discussion?
Oh, is, I was waiting because Stephanie is reading the...
Well, I was just, is this what they consider to be their full contract? Or is there anything additions?
No, this is it. This is what they sent us.
I don't want to get this bogged down in legality. I would, of course, always recommend that there be a little bit more fleshed out contract with some dates and times certain and opportunities to get out of the contract at any given time by both parties. And there's some just general severability clauses that you'd want in to a contract. I'm actually, I know that they do this for a lot of municipalities. I feel like I've seen additional contracts from them before. So maybe we could work together just to communicate with them and see if we could flesh out a minor contract that gives some basic guidelines.
You know, something that says, in the event that you do what you did last year and totally drop the ball, we have some amount of recourse to... Because it was a huge pain for a lot of people and we ended up clawing back a bunch of interest payments and late payments and everything else.
Remember that after we've paid for the postage, the total contract is $6,300. So there's not very much you can do as far as punishment before they say, take your business elsewhere. You know that the punishment or whatever the option is, it can't be worth more than $6,300.
And that's fine, but I don't like doing business with companies that hold a gun to my head.
I understand what you're saying.
Any further discussion? I think this is tearing the motion.
I move that we waive the bid process for printing tax bills and... That's it, Tony. That's it.
Do you want to put something that Stephanie works with, the company for?
Why don't we do two separate motions?
Okay.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
Opposed?
And then I'll move that we award the bid to Vision Government Solutions subject to the town solicitor and the tax collector coming to some arrangement on appropriate contract language.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, Tom.
Tiven Fire Department Chief Lloyd requests authorization to purchase Scott air packs, face pieces and air bottles for $25,000 from Shipman's Fire Equipment Company Incorporated, Waterford, Connecticut. Stephanie, would you like to say something before we?
I guess I had a primary question for the chief in that I reviewed the documents and I did conduct some research. I know that Shipman's Fire Equipment is on the state-approved vendor list for Connecticut. I did search for them on the Rhode Island vendor list, could not find them. And I tried to find any opportunity for reciprocity between Rhode Island and Connecticut and could not find that either. So I just didn't know...
They gave me an NPA number of 11PSX0117.
Right, which is the Connecticut's identification number.
I thought they had said that was also in Rhode Island, but I'm not.
I was unable to verify them. So I guess I would either advise the council that if they can produce evidence of their listing on the Rhode Island, if not, I do have concerns that this would be...
Yeah, if they're not on the NPA, chief, if they need to, if they're not a sole source, they're not on the Rhode Island NPA, we can't...
That's fine. I'll look into that.
So maybe the council could approve a condition or table it, either way.
Table it and...
That's fine.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a question for the chief? Did we replace these the year before, half of it?
No, we weren't able to replace three. We have about 24 of them. They're all coming up at the end of their life expectancy. And that's what we were trying to do. We tried to slowly put money in. And we're also trying for grants to get that. So there was money, it was broken down into $25,000 increments, trying to slowly get ahead of it. As opposed to going for $150,000.
Who did we purchase it from last time?
Scott's, from Shipman's.
Alright, so we'll look into that.
I'll make a phone call in the morning.
That's not in next year's budget, actually.
No, it's a capital project this year.
It's a mission. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
DPW Director Pervici requests authorization to advertise for purchase of town park recycling and trash recyclables.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chairman.
Recyclables, excuse me.
Recyclables. I just want to follow up with a request from Councilor Palatier and past Councilor Blorak to kind of upgrade our parks with recycling and trash bin combinations. A lot of research went in through the councilors and into the landfill subcommittee because $20,000 was requested through the landfill subcommittee out of the reserve account to pay for them. There may be some information on here. I've kind of requested to go out to bids because I wasn't quite sure if we could do a priority purchase for this specific bin. So that would be my preference. Received a lot of information online. I've contacted them in person and negotiated a price down from roughly $1,344 delivered each to $1,000 delivered each. So we would get the 20 bids that we were looking for and for the $20,000 that have been approved by the landfill committee. So that's why I'm not quite sure whether we have to go out to bids or this particular bin setup that, that has been selected could fall into a priority purchase. So that's where we're at. They will cover just the, the fields. I think we have two at Fort Baden, we'd have two at South Field down in East Road, we'd have six at Bogomash Park and the other 10 would be at Town Farm spread over the four different fields. So that's the question.
Stephanie just asked me a question. When I was researching, when Bill and I were researching, Highland, and it's, it's these people parking facilities, it's all the same company, they're the only company that I'm aware of, when I contacted them, that, that, they have the, I don't know if that's a license or they make these things, but the particular ones we picked, the diamond units, were only available through that vendor. Is that...
That's correct, yeah.
...found as well. When I talked to the woman, I mean, it was in November or December and got a quote to present to the council, that was what I understood to be the case as well. They were, they were the only ones that made these things.
So in that case, you know, what they could be qualified as, as a sole source vendor, what, my guess is, is that they have some sort of patent on that.
They do, yes.
We just ask for verification of that patent number so we can have it on our records and the council could go ahead and approve this as a sole source.
And just a quick question. When we talk about these bids, what, what is the law or that requires bids, a competitive bid process? And is it just for taxpayer money or is it, because this is part of our resource recovery rebates and stuff, so it's only designed, can only be spent for recycling activities?
So with regards to the acquisition, it applies to any governmental entity or quasi-governmental entity, which is what any sort of waste management typically falls under. The requirements are, if it's $5,000 or less, it does not have to go out to a bid at all. It can just be awarded directly. If they can establish that they are a sole source vendor or that they are on the state's approved purchasing list, then we do not have to go for bids. So it's only something that's over $5,000 and is not a sole source that we have to seek bids on and you have to seek at least, the piece is you put it out to at least three entities to seek bids.
Right, okay. So it's, the trigger is sort of spending more than $5,000.
That's exactly right.
Madam President, if I could. When this first came up, I was on the, still on the budget committee and I had requested at that time that we look at the option of using a private vendor to pick up the trash at the ball fields. And it's a few reasons why. One, we currently pay public workspeople to go around with a pickup truck and a trailer to dump all these. I'm not sure exactly how much time it takes, but I'm going to bet it's a better part of the day.
It'd be a day, at least.
And it's what, twice a week?
Yep.
So you add in recycling, but what happens when the landfill closes? How, where do these guys take the trash in? Are they going to have to rent a dumpster? And let me just finish, because what I did was, I went and looked at what companies like waste management could provide and are providing in different areas and they have a type of a dumpster that's picked up by that same truck with the arm. And you have a recycle can and the guy doesn't even get out of the truck, he basically just drives up and they dump it and it goes off into the recycler to the, and it seemed to be a better system and it seems to be more cost efficient for the town than paying two guys to drive around in a truck with a trailer. And as I said, when the landfill closes, we end up having to either rent a dumpster somewhere and then we have to take and dump the stuff out of the trailer into a dumpster somehow. So I'd be like to see a private option as well. I mean, I'd like to see what private companies can do to compare cost. Because I don't see any built into this, it's not telling you anywhere where the manpower costs are going to increase to dump these new dumpsters or new trash cans. So there's a cost beyond just buying the trash cans.
I don't disagree. And I can just speak to the research and the discussion that we had at the various times that we spoke about this. And we talked about that at a landfill committee meeting, a recycling committee meeting. And the, the issue was logistics, that we couldn't, we couldn't, well, I'll just tell you what we found. We found that in some areas, that made sense. Town farm, upper fields, it makes sense to have, you know, the, the containers that are self-contained that you can pick up with the recycling committee. The lower field, the soccer field, the beaches, most of the areas of Bogomash Park and the other smaller recreation areas are not as accessible and so, or not accessible at all. You can't drive a trash truck onto the beach and pick up four or five trash containers. It just isn't, it's just not feasible. And so in an effort to address the issues that we have had over the last two or three years with recycling, increasing recycling activity and trash collection at our town beaches and parks and beautification, as part of a responsible environmental approach, that's what we came up with. And I don't disagree that there's, there's an impact, but...
When I did see where these dumpsters were employed, obviously we're not going to put the dumpster down on the beach. They basically were in one area that was designated closer to the restroom in the parking lot. Those people are leaving, they have a place to deposit their trash. So it doesn't necessarily have to be the trash cans right down on the beach.
And I, I'll, I'll speak to that too. The issue with the ball fields are, that's, that's what we used to have. We used to have centralized trash locations and the problem was that people just threw, people threw trash wherever they were when they had trash in their hand. Or they, they had them collected in the dugout. So they had, so we put recycling in trash locations as close to where trash is generated, the concession stand, the dugout, the bleachers, areas and especially in walking trails and things like that, where people are with their cars. So it's, when we want to be successful in trash and recycling best practices, we have to make it easy and make it, and that's why these things are bright blue and bright green and they're visible and they're, they're going to be in a little pad so that you can see them, they're obvious, you dispose of your trash in a convenient location instead of having a brown thing that blends into the landscape that you can't see, so you just throw your wrapper on the ground and...
I could say as I'm looking at the dollars it's going to cost the town and I'm all about getting the best value for the town, it just seems to me the private option should be weighed to see if it's, you know...
Joe, Joe, there is another consideration. When the landfill committee was considering this, one of our considerations was that we wanted, we wanted to make sure that this was acceptable to resource recovery. We talk about it as town money, but the money for this actually comes from a project for resource recovery.
To buy the cans.
Where they're trying to encourage recycling.
They're not going to pay to pick up two...
Well, you're not up to that issue. I guess what, the issue that we were trying to address is, is this a project, just buying these bins and these recycling bins? Would this be a project that would be acceptable to resource recovery? Well, I think the answer is obvious, yes. As a matter of fact, we're going to include it with our annual report this year, as I understand it. So whatever project you come up with, make sure that you, you understand that it has to, it has to be acceptable to resource recovery or they're not going to, they're not going to continue funding this. Well, I mean, that's where the money's coming from.
We could say that, I just want the best for the town as far as, you know, it just seems to me that we should be weighing both options.
But how it's, how it's picked up, I don't think is, is the relevant right now. Usually it's what type of bins and...
What happens when the landfill closes? What do they do with the trash? It's in the back of the trailer. Are they going to now have to put it in a dock where they can get up high enough to dump it into a dumpster?
Would it be the same place where our trash...
How do we, you know, there's a, there's a lot more to it than that. And then you have two guys that are already working quite a bit of time picking up the kids. But it's going to double the work because we have one trailer. So we're either going to go around, pick up the trash and then go around, pick up the recycles or we're going to have a train going around with two trailers behind it. It's just my point. And I made this point back to the council and I requested it, we looked at the private option and I was ignored. So I'm bringing it back up again.
I don't think you were ignored, Joe, but...
Well, I don't see, I never saw a price on what it would be to do it with a, with a private company. I never saw a figure.
You're, you're, when you say it's public versus private, you're comparing apples and grapefruits. It's totally, it's totally different. We're talking about an infrastructure improvement versus a service. And I'm sure if we talked to our, our recycling and our trash pickup folks, they would entertain an additional stop somewhere. It's not going to be, I seriously doubt we're talking about two separate prices for one if they provide us bins and one if they don't provide us bins. Half of which they can't even access with their truck to begin with.
Well, the, the system I'm talking about would be more in line with what you see in other communities would be just the arm that picks out, something that we had talked about going to with the larger trash cans, which could be something in the future in town. And the money that we're talking about spending for these trash cans could go to pay for those bins.
I mean, I don't want it to sound like I, Bill and I just decided one day we were going to create some cockamamie scheme and pick something out of the blue. We did a tremendous amount of research. We understood what the best practices in towns, in corporations and in facilities management. We went through a bunch of iterations. We found the best possible product to serve the needs of the town. We consulted with the conservator, I mean, with the landfill committee. We consulted with DPW. We consulted with the town administrator. We secured funding. This wasn't something we just decided, what the heck, let's spend 20 grand on these pieces of junk cans.
I agree. Alls I said was, I want what's, you know, it's our chore to give the taxpayers the best value.
Yes, and it was my chore to do this work.
So therefore, I just like that this option was a viable option as far as private vendors. I just like to see the price. If I don't get support, I don't get support. But that's just my opinion. I think we could do it cheaper and more efficiently using the private company.
Sure, but I just, first of all, when the town in its wisdom fired everybody who was picking up the trash, it costs us $600 a week to have Hubble go around and pick it up for us. It's $2,400 a month. Right now, I've got two ways to go around and pick it up as part of our salary whenever I ask them to. Really, he has a big bunch of games on Wednesday, the bins are full and we call up Philly Manning and say, the bins are full, come get me. Not calling close to him, not calling recent management or anything else. Point number two, nothing looks worse. I'm trying to be a town resident, doing everything I can, but right now I'm still from outside, so here's my feedback. Nothing makes this town look bad than having every other color M and M lid at Gwinnett's Beach, yellow, red, orange, purple, blue. It's like you went to the junkyard and found a bunch of trash bins and threw them on the beach. Enough of that. Get all things that look uniform, that serve the function, that can handle the wind, that can handle the gulls and make the place look like somebody cares. So for the amount of money we're going to spend and for the flexibility it gives us, my last point, point three, I'll be gosh darned. Do you make it?
Good.
I'll be gosh darned if we start driving trucks across the fields that we're trying to go gosh darn hard to fix.
I didn't tell you you'd drive across, but...
The only place you can put the bins so the kids, remember you're dealing with children, they're nine, 10 years old, I've got a body and I'm going to throw it somewhere, somewhere close to me. I'm not going to be disciplined enough to walk all the way up in the parking lot, put it where it's convenient for the truck to come get it. I'm going to throw it where I stand. And if you don't believe me, go to Bogomash Park and let it go. That skateboard park is full of stuff, even if the trash bin is only 15 feet wide.
So that's why I said kids, and I can make a difference to pigs, okay?
Well, to pigs, but to those who don't comply, they will have a place to do it, but their bins need to be located in a spot where you can't just pick it up and throw it away.
That's entertaining. Actually, may I address this for one, I do, in crossing Ts and dotting Is, I do have a little concern that what's on the agenda is a request authorization to advertise for the purchase of these. So if we may just put it on to the next town council agenda, the acquisition, authorizing the DPW director to authorize the purchasing of these.
So we're not going to advertise because...
Okay.
I move that we put on next agenda, authorization to approve for purchase, town park recycling and trash receptacles, subject to the bid and terms and conditions provided, for the sum not to exceed $20,000.
Second?
Motion, I'd discuss it.
Just one last thing. Matt, would it take a lot of effort just to call someone and get an estimate of what it would take?
No, we'll do that. Like I said, I don't have a data point, I've got the local guy.
You know what, it's just to prove...
We don't even know if it's appropriate.
I understand it, but just to prove a point.
Okay.
I can ask Patriot, all right? They collect cans for private citizens all around town, so...
Just to get an estimate of what it would take.
They go around, they kick up a lot of people around town that don't want to buy bags.
So we'll have an estimate to compare it with. But that's all. I'll support it.
Motion made second. And all those in favor?
Thank you.
Opposed? Town Planner Mark Russo requests authorization to advertise RFP for industrial real estate appraisal for Tiven Industrial Park. Hey, Tom.
Hey, you know, we've got a lot of interest in the industrial park and it makes some good sense to have a professional appraisal done. We create a scope. I think you have a copy of that in front of you this evening. I got some assistance from Brett and others to help me on the scope. We've identified some funding for that appraisal. Report Chamber of Commerce is going to help us out with some of that, portion of that. Scott Humphries, Report Chamber of Commerce. Working on that. And I think we have identified some local funds within, I think, the town clerk's budget. So I'm asking for permission to go ahead and advertise this. The group of people we advertise it to would be pretty limited. We'll advertise a normal publication, but it's probably a list of 15, 20 vendors who would do this type of appraisal, highest and best use.
Okay. Any discussion or motion?
I had a suggestion. Since we've had land sold that's in the industrial area, why is it that we just can't go and look at previous sales as the tax assessor does to get approximate value? Why do we have to spend money for a professional appraisal?
Because it's not the same job.
Well, Joe, that misses the point entirely. I think the purpose of trying to get some industry into the industrial park is really twofold. One is to get tax revenue and two is to get jobs. Be perfectly blunt, if you came in with the perfect proposal for the industrial park, I'd give you the land.
Don't say that.
You know, I'd love to give them the land too if it was a great proposal, but we're not talking about that. We're talking about paying money to have an appraisal done on a piece of property.
Right.
And it's just my opinion that property is sold in the industrial areas around here would give us a pretty good idea of what an acre is worth. I mean, we've had some recent sales. We just seem to need a tax assessor to give us a decent idea of what the land is worth and keep the money in the coffers.
Thank you, Jim.
If I can just add one comment, I think we're going to have to be very careful to make sure that we're not representing to the town that we will be selling this property at any particular market price. Our consideration is not only going to be market price, it's also going to be what revenue can this project provide? What, how many jobs can this project provide? That's going to be as important as the market price. So I think we have to make sure that we're telling the taxpayers, in a given situation, it might be X, in another situation, it might be Y. So that's, that the market price to me is going to be a float depending on what they can provide this town.
Good point.
Let's entertain a motion.
I move that we authorize permission to advertise the RFP for appraisal of the industrial park. I have a nitpicky formatting comment though. I have a nitpicky formatting comment on...
Go ahead. Well, I need a second.
Yeah.
Second.
The only thing is, on page three, under evaluation and selection, there's a list of criteria. They all have question marks for the icon, and then the last one is unlike the others. And so I would just either separate them or change those question marks to just bullet points. Because the last one isn't a criteria, it's just a note to be, make sure you don't omit those things. I just don't want people to...
Thank you.
Do we have an approximate cost?
We're assuming it's about $10,000 up to...
$10,000 for an appraisal?
Which, they're getting new plot tubes to help subsidize.
See, we could fix about 400 potholes with that money.
They're only authorizing a proposal, a request for proposals. If you don't like any of them, we can talk about it.
Motion's been made, second. All those in favor? Opposed? Open public forum for announcements. Thank you, I'm sorry. Open public forum for announcements, comments, or questions, there are none. Okay. Town administrator, I do have announcements.
I have nothing, ma'am, please.
Council announcements, I do have one. There will be, I want to schedule a special council meeting regarding casino proposal with representatives from Twin River Worldwide Holdings, Inc. They have agreed to May 4th. We were able to get the middle school. I thought 7 o'clock would be start. Is that okay with all of you?
What is the framework of this meeting? Just a presentation or...
I was asked to meet with them Monday at 3 o'clock before they made the announcement at all. So when they started describing things to me, I felt, which isn't much more than what they've described, but I felt that they should do it to the entire council and I asked them to stop presenting things to me. I felt it needed to be to all at 7:00. So I asked them to go to the middle school and do it. And it was my, Stephanie was with me, and we decided that that was the best thing so that it wouldn't, that it would be out in the public, not behind closed doors, and all of you would hear exactly what I was hearing. It's at the middle school because we weren't able to get to the high school.
And Madam President, if I may just follow up on that, in following conversations with their legal counsel, because we've now started to have some regular conversations, what I did request is, to the extent that they have details, that they be prepared to present them to you on May 4th. I think that Madam President can represent that they were giving kind of general overviews that were not as helpful as necessary. So we've asked for specificity in that reason.
And at the time, I told them that he needed to give us more so that we could present that to the community. And I asked for it to be at the open meeting, just because I wanted everyone to hear exactly what we're hearing.
But there will be no public input?
At this point, there won't be any public input. Our counselors can ask questions. I don't, and...
So there will be no vote?
No vote.
Just to hear the proposal?
No vote. The public is welcome, the public is welcome to come and attend and listen, but there won't be public comment.
And they will be holding public meetings afterwards.
Yeah, they're going to have all small public meetings. They told me small, whatever that means. I just felt at the time, because of the way they presented it to me, that all of you needed to hear what I was hearing and we needed more detail and we didn't need to do it in an executive forum, we need to do it in an open public meeting. And I suggest we do this all the way forward so that the community hears exactly what we know.
It's only my opinion, but I prefer this to be more of a conversation rather than sitting in front of a presentation for 45 minutes or something.
No, it won't be 45 minutes.
Those are not particularly...
No, it won't be 45 minutes because they don't have 45 minutes of information to give.
Okay, good. Yeah, I just, you know...
It took you five minutes and that was it.
Four or five.
By the way, Matt was with me also. I brought them with me. I didn't want to go alone.
And I also think that part of this, part of the way we deal with this meeting is, for them and for everyone, is managing expectations that we really need to kind of, vetting is the word of the day.
Well, I told them that I wanted them to give a brief synopsis, give us what we knew, but I did tell them that we'd be asking questions, that this council had every right to start asking questions instead of just me hearing about this 12 hours before they made the announcement. So...
And that's the, we're also going to, before that, have the IAF.
Before that, we want to just do that very briefly, the private contract. So that's okay with everybody? I think I need a motion as long as we're in agreement. So, the people on MTV World here, it'll be May 4th, which is next Monday at 7 o'clock at the Tivon Middle School. We will be meeting with Twin River Worldwide Holdings, Inc. It is not a public hearing, so there won't be any public comment, but the town council will be asking the questions and you may want to attend to get more information. Town, oh, I'm sorry, scheduling for a show cause hearing, Victor Ling License for New China Gourmet, 180 Main Road, definitely.
So I know that Neil had wanted to be here this evening, but I believe he was under the weather. There are some issues that are happening at New China, both within the space that is the restaurant and then within the building that is owned by a separate individual. I know that Neil's working with the fire department on those issues and so we will be prepared to present those to the board, to the council sitting as the board of licenses, but we do need approval to advertise for that hearing.
We have fire code violations? What's the extent of the...
My understanding is that there's both building and fire code. I don't know that a final report has been completed, maybe the fire chief can speak. I do know that there's ventilation.
There are both issues. There are some structural issues within the building as it is. The problem is the new entity that has taken it over does not have control of the building. The building owner is supposedly away in China, if I'm correct on that.
Stands to reason.
Yeah, so it makes it a little tough. This was all, they triggered this when they asked for the licensing change. We went to do a fire inspection on it and found these issues and worked with the building inspector on it.
To the extent that there are issues that relate directly to the operation of the restaurant itself, those will be what's brought before a show cause.
So that we're not currently taking any action against our license, but we are investigating?
We are investigating, and so the scheduling of the show cause would be at that point in time, we feel we have sufficient evidence, we would bring it before you. If not, we would obviously ask for either continuation or dismissal of that show cause.
Can I ask a quick question? As they're leasing that building, I mean, is it similar to like where somebody who rents can do self-help? In other words, could the people that are leasing that building authorize repairs?
So I think that's a conversation that needs to be had with the business owner. I know that those conversations have begun. One, it depends on what's in their lease, and two, it depends on what their requirements are for the outfitting of the restaurant. So in many instances, a lease will say, the owner and operator of that business is required to maintain and upkeep all equipment related to their operations. So if there's a ventilation problem with one of the hoods, that would fall under the operator of the business and not necessarily under the property owner. But we will have further conversations and flex...
Funny you mention the hood, I had noticed probably what we're talking about.
You have a free report at that hearing from our marshal on that time.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion.
I move that we schedule a show cause hearing on the Victor Ling License for New China Gourmet, 180 Main Road, a date to be determined by the solicitor and administrator.
Just a second. Motion's made, second. All those in favor? Against financial town referendum update. Nancy's not available, do you have?
I can tell you a couple of things. The financial town hearing is Thursday, May 7th, Tivon, I'm right there, 7th. Thursday, April 30th, Tivon High School auditorium, 7:00 PM, and absentee voting will be here at the town hall, May 14th and 15th, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Ballot applications are available here and the clerk's office or on the town website. There's a lot of information on the town website.
Thank you. Mr. River.
I move that we go into closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law, Section 4246-585, rate acquisition of real property.
Second.
Motion made, second. All those in favor? Oh, actually, I'll call him, sorry. Constable Sousa, Constable Perry, Constable Mello, Constable Lambert, aye.
Yes.
Aye. Yes, go ahead.
And stay enclosed, executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law, Section 4246-585, rate disposition of real property, industrial park proposal.
Second.
Motion made, second. Mr. Sousa, Mr. Perry, Mr. Mello, Mr. Lambert, Mr. DiMeades, aye.
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 And stay enclosed, executive session pursuant to Section 4246-581, rate job performance. Fire Chief Robert Lloyd, notice given.
Second.
Motion made, second. Mr. Sousa, Mr. Perry, Mr. Mello. Aye.
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 That's how we do it.
And stay enclosed, executive session pursuant to Section 4246-582, rate litigation, Town of Tivon versus James and Melissa Pellicia.
Second.
Motion made, second. Mr. Perry, Mr. Mello, Mr. Lambert, aye.
Aye.